You ready?
Uh huh.
It is time.
Welcome to the U N County Commission Meeting. We're held in the Commission Chambers. It's August twenty second, twenty twenty-two at eleven A M. I'd ask you to turn your phones off, put them on silent if you would, and thank you for coming. Uh, we'll start out today with the prayer from, oh, who do I have? Oh, Alicia Cothorpe and pledge from Heidi Lundberg.
Dear Holy Father, we are so grateful to be able to gather here together as a community, and we ask you to please bless our community that we will be able to have safety and that we'll be able to prosper and have people. We see with the elected officials today as they make decisions for our community that they will do what's best for, for those that live here, we're grateful that we're able to live in a great country and that we're able to have the blessings and the privileges that we have. We ask them to have special blessing upon us that protect us and that we will be watched over and protected and that we will be able to be safely and peacefully in the United States of America.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, Heidi. First item on the agenda would be approval of minutes for August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to approve the minutes for August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Next would be the report of warrants and review of the counter signature of certified list of claims.
There we go. Now we're on. Warrants from August nineteenth in the amount of four hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cents. There was, the main big one on here was for the health insurance for the month at three hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and thirteen cents. Also, there's a check for the audit, which I will hold until we actually physically receive that. They have billed us, but I anticipate receiving it actually last week, but has not shown up yet. I will reach out to them today for forty-one thousand. List of claims, Commissioners, we have check number three eight one four four seven to C D Electric. They did some troubleshooting for us at the public safety complex at the time they was doing it. They weren't really quite sure what it was gonna be, but there was no purchase order issued on that for seven hundred and seventy dollars. And that was, uh, facilities over the public safety complex. Next one is check number three eight one four five seven to Curtis Blue Line. This is, uh, Bulletproof vests grant. They ordered one for twelve hundred and forty-two dollars and they did not get a purchase order on that one. And those are the claims. And again, sorry, John, but these still were not issued, were not created, modified, or deleted in my office. We're still working through that process.
Okay. Any comments? Entertained a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, um, or authorize the counter signature of the certified list of claims as presented.
Okay.
Second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Cemetery certificates.
Several day Commissioners, Vernal Memorial Park, Sandra Rasmussen, Lot two eighteen, space twelve. These are all in Vernal Memorial Park. Benjamin Allen Ream, Lot two eighteen, space thirteen. Continuing there, Kenneth G. Campbell and Camille Campbell, Lot two eighteen, spaces twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-eight through thirty-one. Vernal Memorial Park, Vicki Stanford, Block P five point zero zero, Lot two, space five. And that's all of those.
Okay. Entertained a motion.
I'd make the motion to approve the cemetery certificates as presented by Mike Wilkins.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thanks, Mike. Tax matters today. None, none. It's great. Business licenses.
Good morning. Gabby Hawks Blackburn with Community Development. We have two home-based businesses today. They have the same conditions.
Okay, we'll do them both at the same time.
The first one is Treed Up LLC. Um, it's located at ninety-three ninety-five North, eighty-five hundred East in Tridel, Parcel Number twelve, eighteen, twenty-nine. This is in the A three zone. Um, it's a home-based clothing business. So I think she orders some clothing online, but makes some as well with a vinyl cutting machine and whatnot. She mostly sells online, but is doing the home base just in case she wants to sell at events or something like that. We went and checked it out. Everything looks good. So the only conditions on this one are that they follow all home-based business rules and regulations.
Okay.
And then the next one is H T Remodeling LLC, located at thirty-one fifty-eight West, four forty South, in Vernal, Parcel Number four, one twenty-three, one forty-three. This is in the R A one zone. Uh, they have their general contracting license. So they do carpentry, flooring, drywall, painting, basically anything to do with the remodel. They don't have any commercial trucks or anything like that. Um, just basic con- um, contractor tools stored within the home. And so the only requirements on this one are that they follow all home-based business rules and regulations as well.
What was the name of the first business?
Treed, T R E E D.
Okay, I got it right. I was surprised.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? Entertained a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the business licenses for Treed Up and H T Remodeling, um, with the understanding and the provision they abide by all home-based business rules.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is approval of the final sale of the Haven Estate Lot sixteen, serial number zero five, zero five four, zero one one six.
Commissioners, this is one we put up for sale in May. We reached out to the next two bidders. They never did. They didn't, neither one of them wanted it, so we put it up for auction again. This time it actually brought more money. So total bid price was twenty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars with the buyer premium thirteen fifty-five for a total of twen- two, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, with that public surplus in here's checks to them for thirteen hundred and fifty-five dollars, county admin fee for twenty-four hundred and fifty, and this will pay off the Vernal City lien of nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirteen cents. And back taxes and current taxes to day of sale is one hundred and seventy-one dollars, but in the back taxes is the difference between that and four nine, four thousand, nine thirty-two. Total check to the county treasurer will be seven thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-four cents. Ultimately, we'll send seven thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-three cents to unclaimed properties. So with that, with you want to re- to
Prove?
Prove that. I have the quitclaim deed and the requisitions ready to go to they need to belong to.
Sounds good. Any questions? Entertained a motion.
I'd make the motion that we approve the final sale for Haven Estates, Lot Number sixteen, serial number zero five, zero five four, zero one one six. With appropriate signatures. Has that got us covered?
Yeah, and your mic's not on. I can tell, Brad. Turn your microphone on. Oh, it's on?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yep, that'll work.
Okay, have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion on this one? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Next item is the Moon Lake Electric contract for an easement for utilities at Buckskin Hills.
Morning, Commissioner, and everybody else in the room. Derek Codamio, manager out to the Buckskin Hills Recreation Complex. Super excited to be here this morning. I present to you uh, right-of-way easement that has been sent to Mr. Sturmer's office and been sent to Brock Slaw's office, and they've gone through it, and it looks pretty good. This is for utilities going to the drag strip and out to the gun range. If you have any questions, I can at, answer them now, or I can bring this up to you. And it's just a right-of-way easement for those public utilities that are gonna be going up to those venues.
And it's the ones for the gate, the electric gate?
Yep, there's one for the electric gate towards the gun range, and then the one that's gonna be towards, uh, the power up for the drag strip.
Okay.
So if, if I can, I can bring that to you or?
Yeah, I have no, no questions. Do you?
No.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
No, it's a, who's the right-of-way with?
Moon Lake Electric.
They own the property?
Well, they'll have the, the right-of-way easement to be able to maintain any-
Across our property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like if there's any maintenance or things that need to be done on the, on the line.
John, do you have any concerns on this? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the right-of-way to Moon Lake Electric, um, to, for providing power at Buckskin Hills, uh, for the drag strip and the shooting range as presented, including authorization of signatures.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Do you have the next one too, Derek?
Oh, yeah.
Works, what is it? Works Slide Deck, Buckskin Hills.
Yep. So yeah, just bear with me as I get my computer up and going. Here we go. Again, for the record, Derek Codamio, uh, manager out there to the Buckskin Hills Recreation Complex, U N County. Uh, very excited to be up here to visit with you all today and to the general public, uh, to give you an idea of what's gonna be coming, uh, next year, September of twenty twenty-three. This is Works. They are the World Off-Road Racing Series, as you can see here on the slide deck, America's favorite off-road racing. When I started talking to these guys, I knew it would be a big deal if we could get them to come out here. I didn't know how big of a deal it really is. This is, this is gonna be a big deal for U N County, Vernal, the whole basin, to have these guys come here, and we'll go through here and kinda give you an idea of what we're looking at. There we go. So here's just kind of the content slide. Works is the ultimate event promoter of amateur grassroots and professional off-road racing of motorcycles, A T Vs, quads, and side-by-sides and U T Vs. We'll go through here and I'll kinda pick out some of these. These guys are world-class. They're first-class in what they do as far as when they bring an event and put it on. Everybody seems to be having a good time. Uh, with Works, you always have a great track setup, consistently puts on a solid weekend of racing, great racing, well-organized, challenging tracks. That's why Works is the best. Love the race series. Awesome racing today. Thank you. They have a huge following of people that come and, and go to these, uh, their races that they hold. Uh, who they are, I'll just kinda do a, a pre- a brief breakdown. Uh, but Works has been succe- uh, successfully promoted over three hundred and forty national off-road events, races over the past twenty years. Uh, the Podium Promotions is, is the company, but Works is, is the, I mean, Podium is the parent company, but they've hosted events in virtually every western state, reaching millions of racers and spectators. Over the past few years, Podium Promotions has been expanding its base and by reaching out, by doing more outdoor and off-road related events and programs. This is what I really, one of these things is, that stuck out to me was right here, this paragraph down here to the bottom. This is what they're about. This is what they promote. Any podium pro- uh, promotions, program, or event must meet these mission-critical criteria. Number one, promote safe family fun, must be physically challenging, rewarding, adhere to the highest standards and safety protocols, provide all access to all people, provide low or no-cost access to our military servicemen and women, promote, promote the core theme of sportsmanship at all times. So when I saw this, I think that really resonates with what we're about here in U N County. We like to have fun, but at the same time, we like to be competitive, and I think that ties into that sportsmanship piece. Also recognizing our military service and women, we're very patriotic here. And so I think a lot of these things align with what our core values are here at, at U N County. I think it would be a great fit for them to, to come here. Sorry, I'm getting a little choked up because I think that's all good stuff, so. Uh, this is a slide deck that represents kind of what their audience and who they're bringing. First of, first and foremost, it's a family-centered sport. Uh, their, their male skew ages are around eighteen to forty-five. That doesn't mean that if you're past forty-five, you can still come and play, I'm pretty sure, but this is their, their average target market that, or what they're seeing as far as people come. The average household of those that are participating in their events has a average household income of a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty-five thousand plus. Uh, seventy, seventy-six percent own pickup trucks, sixty-six percent own recreational vehicles, you know, your RVs, your campers, thirty-five percent own at least one SUV. And this is what really stuck out to me based on what they're saying is that would bring one point five million spent in the local economy over a three-day combined event period. So that's, that's a big number. That's huge. And I think if, well, I know if we were able to do what we do, like we do in U N County and roll out the red carpet for them, they would come back. Randy has already come out. I've visited with him. He fell in love with Vernal, loved what he saw. He loved going up to Flaming Gorge and checking out Flaming Gorge. And I think as long as we work with them and tie it in, we can really promote what, what we have here and tie it in to be a vest, a, a vacation race destination to where they're here all way, all week, riding at Dock's Beach, riding at Jensen Hills, riding the outlaw trails, going to Flaming Gorge and checking out everything that we have. Uh, I don't need to go into any more of that, but here are some stats that, uh, over the series, over their race series throughout the year, they have a hundred thousand spectators, uh, over fourteen thousand race entries. This is, if you can look up there, as far as their Instagram and their social media platform, what they've got going, they reach a lot of people as far as how they're, they're promoting and, and reaching out to these people that wanna come and, and check them out. As far as advertising goes, they're in a lot of these big-name ma- magazines and, and publications as far as dirt bike, motocross, everything's that's kind of associated with, uh, the outdoors, and so it would, we would be represented in a lot of those things. Since this would be their first race here, after talking with Randy, usually there are others that follow. If, if they have a good, good turnout, turns out good, then there's other race promoters and race series out there that would, that would wanna come. And so that, that's where I just, I'm kinda wanted to be up here, let, let everybody know, let, uh, everybody here in the room know that it's gonna be a big deal as far as for local vendors, for everybody. I think as the tide rises, we all rise, and so everybody will have a huge impact from, from having these guys come this first year, and then hopefully, like I said, as long as we roll out the red carpet and help them out and, and make sure they have a successful event, they'll come back other years also. That's kind of a, just a quick breakdown. Um, I just, be good to introduce everybody, but yeah, they'll, they will be here middle of September next year, and so we'll be working on that and getting everything ready for them to come.
Great.
If you have any questions, I can build any or?
No, they're a high-class, uh, group. We, we worked with them years ago when we first had that first motocross track, and they put on a, a top-notch race. They do a good job.
So, super excited. It's gonna be good.
Yeah, it'll be good.
So, without that, I will close.
Hey, thanks for the presentation. Appreciate all you do out there, Derek.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It looks, it looks good, everything you have going on out there.
Oh, I mean, and just a plug, we're gonna be having, the last oval track race is this weekend, so those that wanna come out and check out the oval track race, the last one's gonna be this weekend. And then we are in full prep mode for the Utah High School Mountain Bike Race that's coming in the middle of September, so it should be exciting. Let all the businesses know, restaurants, people are coming. Get stocked up.
Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate everything you do. Next would be update on the twenty twenty-two sales tax revenue projections.
Mark Caldwell, U N County Budget Officer. Um, I have for you the monthly, uh, update of our sales tax revenue projections. And, um, just to get started, U N County's never collected this much in sales tax. This, these are record numbers, and part of the reason is what we just heard from Derek are the things that the commission's been pushing and, and bringing activities into our community. Quickly go through, there are six different sales taxes that the county collects. The arts and tax, sales tax, if you see down here in the bottom right-hand corner, the projection, we're a hundred fifty-seven thousand ahead of projection right now through July, so through seven months. The county quarter cent sales tax, we're thirteen thousand, six hundred, uh, above what we're actually, so we're in a deficit position there. We've overestimated by thirteen thousand. Hopefully, we'll make that up in the coming months. On the county sales tax, we're, we have a surplus of a hundred and twenty-four thousand. On the restaurant tax, we have a surplus of thirty-one thousand. On the transit room tax, we have a surplus of ninety-six thousand. And on the transit sales tax, we have a surplus of a hundred and eighty thousand. So in summary, there are six types. You can see that all together, the six of them, we have a surplus. We've, we've underestimated revenue, so we're bringing in more than what we've estimated by five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to date.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Next item would be a memorandum of understanding between the United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management, Vernal Field Office, and U N County for Dock's Beach Recreation Enhancement and Cliff Ridge Recreation Enhancement.
Yeah, good morning. Uh, Matt Kazir, U N County, uh, Community Development Office. This, uh, memorandum of, of understanding is so that we can be a cooperating agency as they develop these two areas, uh, Dock's Beach and Cliff Ridge. Uh, this will give us access to any of the planning documents before they go out to the public, and will give us a chance to comment, uh, on those, uh, things before they are sent out to the public as well, so. Um, there were a couple of changes in the document after, uh, John reviewed it. Um, it did state that it, this was, uh, between U N County Department of Community Development, and so we'll take that out. It'll just be U N to County. And then, uh, the signature on it, they had me down as the person to sign this, and that needs to be the commission chair, so. Um, and then it does have me as the point of contact, though, for the county, uh, for these projects. Um, so with those, with those two changes, uh, we have this here for your consideration.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? Entertained a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the United States Department of the Interior, Interior Bureau of Land Management, Veral- Vernal Field Offices, and U N County for Dock's Beach Recreation Enhancement and Cliff Ridge Recreational Enhancement with the changes that have been noted on it, and appropriate signatures.
Okay. Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Uh, next item is the rezone for Steven Styler, requesting a rezone from the, from a R A one to R one on property owned by Susan L. Hawstruss, located at three three seven zero Pitt Road, Vernal, Utah. Serial number five eighty-five thirty-three. And property located at three thousand west, one thousand south, Vernal, Utah, serial number five eighty-five six.
All right, uh, so you might, uh, Commissioners, you might remember this rezone from a few months ago. Uh, they came in and they were looking to zone a portion of these two parcels, or really a portion of the south parcel here, uh, to R two. Uh, that particular rezone was denied. Um, so they've come back and they're, are requesting to zone, uh, both parcels, uh, that are highlighted here in the, uh, kind of a turquoise color, uh, to R one, which is a residential, uh, one zone. Um, it's primarily for, uh, single-family homes. Uh, it does allow for up to a threeplex, so, in that zone. To kinda get where we're at, just so everybody's kind of aware, uh, these properties are off of Pitt Road, which comes off of fifteen hundred south, um, kinda near Hidden Hollow subdivision and, uh, Air Village Hills area. Uh, they are currently zoned R A one, and the property around them to the south, the, the north, and the, uh, east is all zoned R A one as well. And then the property to the west is zoned M G one mining and grazing. And there is, you've got the, the county has an asphalt pit there. Uh, then there's, um, the tar sands processing facility that's there as well to the east. Okay, um, the future land use map does show this area to go to a moderate density, which is, uh, what our R one zoning is. Uh, you can see it's kind of right on the boundary there of that. Let's see, um, there were a few public comments at the Planning Commission Public Hearing that was held on Wednesday. And it goes kind of along with this. There was a lot of, uh, most of the comments dealt with, uh, that the public infrastructure and utilities in that area, um, aren't really sufficient for, uh, higher-density residential uses. They specifically talked about the, the access road, uh, which is referred to as Pitt Road. And then they also talked about the water system with the water pressure and the waters at capacity at this point in the area. There was also one, uh, public comment that was in support of the rezone. Um, and the other public comments were that there are other areas around the county that are more suitable for this type of development. So you can kinda see this is a site. You can see there are some single-family residences there. They kind of, a few of them front on Pitt Road, and then, but most of them, their frontage comes off of fifteen hundred south, and Pitt Road's kind of their back, backyard area, um, access to their backyard. Um, again, you can, uh, just so you can get oriented here, this would be, uh, Pitt Road here, and the residential development to the south of the property. And then, um, this is the asphalt plant and things that would be on the west side of the property. Again, just another view of the property there. Uh, the property's not really currently being used for, for anything. It's just kind of open, open space. You can see it's not irrigated or, or farmed or anything. Just a quick comparison of the zones, and I know this is a little bit small, but basically what you've got, as far as lot size goes, R A one allows for 12,000 square foot lot minimums. The R one would be 8,000 square feet per lot on it, that's on a single-family. On a two-family, it's 14,000 square feet and 12,000 square feet. And then the frontage or width requirements of the property are 90, 90 feet in the R A one and 80 feet in the R one. And then you get a two-foot reduction in your side and rear setbacks from 10 feet in the R A one to eight feet in the R one. And then as far as differences in uses, over here, kind of on the left-hand side, these are the uses that are just allowed in the R A one zone. So you can see there's, there's quite a few additional uses, mostly dealing with agriculture, things of that nature. Then here in the center, these are things that are allowed in both zones. And then in the R one zone, there's only one additional use, which is multi-family three. So they can have up to three units. Whereas in the R A one, two or two units or like a duplex is a maximum. Okay, the Planning Commission, they did hold a public hearing. We, I kind of went over what the public comments were there. And after the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the rezone to R one. It was a three-to-one vote. And I think that's all I've got as far as the presentation goes.
What was the concern from the no vote? Did they say why they didn't one approve it?
She didn't specifically, I mean, after the vote, she didn't specifically mention anything. But during the meeting, she was, she made comments about that it was near in areas that weren't compatible with that kind of density, with the, the mining and stuff that's going on to the west of the property. And then she also voiced some concerns about the infrastructure as well. The area may not be suitable or ready at this time for that kind of zoning.
Has the applicant said why they wanted to go from a R A one to a R one? I mean, is it, they want to put three, three-plexes on, on it, or is it?
Yeah, so at the meeting, they stated that they were not looking to do any attached units. They were gonna do all single-family. They said the reason they wanted to go to the R one was because portions of the property aren't really developable because of terrain. And so they wanted to be able to take advantage of a little bit higher density in the areas where they could develop. But they did state that they were looking at single-family units out there. But once it's rezoned, it could be used for whatever, whatever's allowed in that zone, so.
And what do we have in there to protect? Say a homeowner buys a house, they understand, hey, I'm buying this house with the mines right here. And, and I'm already buying that with the mine there. And then I know there's a gravel pit that's approved for back off the backside there that's already approved and that the landowner's looking at putting one in the next few years. What's gonna protect a homeowner that buys this home second or third-handed? That they understand, hey, this gravel pit's already in my backyard. And so we don't run into what we're running to with some of this other information over like on the rec center on that, on that property? How, how, how are we gonna protect the people that buy it? Fire next.
Yeah, so it's typically, like Commissioner Springer said, it's kind of buyer beware. They should be checking the zonings around where they're purchasing to see what's allowed in those zones. But if you really want, I mean, if you want to protect them further, there are, we do have an industrial protection area or an agricultural protection area that's allowed by the state that the county has adopted. So those owners could come in and request, hey, we want to put this, in this case, with the mining stuff, would be industrial protection area. We want to put this industrial protection area over our property. And what that requires is, once that's approved, then if they come and do a subdivision, they actually have to put on the plat that there is an industrial protection area within, I think it's a mile of the subdivision. And so that, that could help notify the owners, hey, there's, there is some mining activities or industrial activities that are going on around this property that you should be aware of as you purchase property.
And that, will that protect the landowners that want to put the mines in? That they're still gonna be able to do it and they're not gonna have to fight to put it in because there's homes here now?
Yeah, I mean, if people want to fight, they're still gonna be able to fight. So if somebody's gonna take them to court and sue them, the people still have whatever options they have to, to do that. But this does help protect them from any county enforcement. So the county's not gonna go up there and enforce stuff on the mine that's not part of their conditional use permit or something, just because they're getting complaints from the property owners. And then from what I understand, it also helps in a lawsuit because they can go and show, hey, before these homes were even built, we had this recorded on there. Or even the homes that currently exist there, we would have to notify all those people within that area and let them know, hey, they're wanting to put this industrial protection area in. And so helps protect, protect them that way.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, did this not come before us a month or two ago? Or something similar? What, what came before us?
Yeah, it did. So what came before you a couple of months ago? Let me get back to showing both properties here. So about two months ago, I believe, they'd come in and asked for most of this south property to be zoned R two. They were gonna leave a buffer of R A one around, around the parcel and the center part was gonna, they were wanting zoned R two residential, which is a higher density even than the R, R one.
Okay. And we denied that?
Correct.
And now they've come back with a change and a verbal that they would stay with the, that they would go with single-family housing, but there's no buffer around the outside like there was the first time?
Correct.
Okay.
What, there are quite a bit of concerns raised about the water? And sewer, if I remember right?
Yeah, and those were raised again this time around that the, I don't know about the sewer, but the, the water for sure. They did say that some of the people in the area don't have a whole lot of pressure and that they had talked with Ashley Valley. And they were kind of at capacity for pressure. One thing with that, no matter how the, if they want to develop the property into R A one, they're gonna have to address the water, they may have, they have to address the road and things like that. So as development happens, they have to address those issues. They're not gonna be able to put in a subdivision if they can't meet the pressure requirements for fire hydrants. The minimum, there are minimum pressures for homes and things like that. So and then the road, they'll have, they'd have to do a traffic study and that, that will determine what that road needs to look like there. The existing county road may need to be improved as well as part of the development.
I think it was the same as last time. These people do not own the land, they're doing it on land owned by the Susan Hawes Trust. Did anyone, a representative from the trust speak on behalf of the project, for or against?
No, we did notify the property owner, though. So they did get a notice letting them know about the, the meeting dates. But we haven't had any comments either way from the property owner other than, I think Deanna did have a phone conversation with them.
And the comment stating, Gabby Blackburn with Community Development. The comment stating that they wanted more housing in the community was from the owner's real estate agent, I believe, yes. So, and the owner was at the meeting with the real estate agent. So I assume that she was speaking on behalf of the owner. Sorry, Matt.
So the two biggest differences, they can, is the lot size. They go to 8,000 from 12,000, so they can put more homes. But it does allow them to go up to a three-plex instead of duplex.
Right, yeah. So they can have an additional attached unit versus the R A one, which allows for two attached units. And this would allow for three attached units.
And they're saying they don't want to do that, but they could if we, if we rezone it.
Yeah, or, or maybe they don't develop and they sell it off to somebody else and.
I don't know what comments to make, other than I, you know, we, we do need housing. We've, we've been looking to get some more homes in U N A County before the rail starts and a few things. So this, and with what these folks are wanting to do at the mine, they're gonna need some more affordable housing people can afford to buy to get into. My question is, and it's always been, is I don't like the idea with the homes that are up there to allow high-density homes go in there.
So just so you're kind of aware what, what a subdivision in R A, or R one looks like. It would be like Quellbrook or Mazer, Mazer Meadows. I'm sorry, I think that's what it's called. It's right there off of Fifth North, just before you get to 2500 West. Between 25, 15 and 2500 West on the north side.
You know, the subdivision right across the street, not the homes just right there in the middle, but the ones that Phil Timothy put in, that, what is that?
Yeah, so that's R A one. And there's some lots in there that are around the 12,000 square feet. So they would be a little bit smaller. That's the subdivision here. They'd be a little bit smaller than, than that. About a 25% smaller, I guess, 12 to 8. One thing with a smaller lot, though, too, is reduces the amount of outside water typically that there is for grass and things like that. So a lot of areas in Utah, especially now, are looking to, to do smaller lots because of water issues and drought and things like that.
I, I see some neighbors here, Rick. I would, I'd like to open it up for comment from you folks, that, the neighborhood. If you, if you have any concerns or anything that you'd like the commission to know? If you'd come up and state your name.
Rick Bell. First, I apologize, I don't have my suit and tie on, I've been running C-MAP. There's a couple of things that really concern me. The first time that, and I wished he was here, when he came to the, the planning meeting.
He being?
Steven Styler. When he came and wanted to zone to R two, he stated that he was involved with the oil shell. Okay, the other night at the meeting, he said he was in no way connected with the oil shell. Him and another developer was doing it, okay? So I'm wondering what story to believe. Now, yes, the higher density, but we all know that if you've got enough money to have a single-family there, you're gonna have, what, camp trailer, boat, ATV, trailer, whatever. The smaller lots are not gonna accommodate for parking of any of that stuff. It's all gonna be out in the road. Let alone the fact that talking with the engineer for the water district, they're, we're maxed out, okay? And they say, okay, well, we'll address all of that, we'll do that. But my concern is, they, they get this all started and develop partway and then they pull out, and who's left with the bag, U N A County? They talked about widening the road down 1500 South. All you gotta do is drive down that road and there's no way to widen it without coming over on property owners. The sewer runs down our, right down the fence on the north side of 1500 South. That sewer line would be under the road if you took, you know, come over there. But on the other side of the road, you got vinyl fence, you got people's yards. There's no way to widen that road. I mean, those are just some common sense things. Yes, there, there, and there's property between 2500 West and Aggie Boulevard on Main Street, both sides, that is already zoned for high-density. You've got sewer, they got water, they got road, they got, it's right there. But I don't know. I think that they could put all the houses they could possibly get in there, staying in the R A one. The other thing that I, was interesting to me, when it, it seems to me, if you're gonna go and request a rezone, you know what's in that rezone. He stated Wednesday night, he didn't know that three, a three-plex was allowed in A one or R, R one. I don't know. I, I, I wished he was here to answer some questions, because I just, something don't smell right.
Anybody else from the neighborhood, the area, that would like to put a comment in? Or if you're with, are you with Steven?
I'm with Mrs. Hawes.
Okay, yeah, if you're, yeah, if you'd, if you'd like to come up and give us a comment, it'd be great.
My name is Brenda Halbert. I'm a professional Realtor. I'm Mrs. Hawes's Realtor. I guess, I, I do understand, if I lived up there, I do understand some of the concerns. I guess it's already zoned, though, and they can be building and they can be putting duplexes on there. So as far as the infrastructure and water, those things are going to have to be addressed. Somebody made a comment the other night, too, about people speeding, which I do think, and I do believe the roads can be widened. I live in an area off of Lane that it's a county road, but the county doesn't maintain it because it's not wide enough. We can do it, we'd have to move some fences and do some things. So I, I know the room is there. But maybe if the infrastructure and signage and marking on the roads were there, that people would uphold the law better or, or you could get law enforcement to come in and get people for speeding, address the water. Like it or not, our community is growing and expanding and the railway will trickle into us. And, and housing is an issue right now. I feel like having housing up so the mine is not so distracting, I feel like that would be aesthetically pleasing. They talked about putting in, I think they said, a gym and a daycare and walking paths. So my opinion is, I, I feel like it would help that area look better. As far as not wanting people building close to you, since I bought my house, not even a year ago, I, I am out in greenlands and farmland. I'm getting big houses built that used to be down my pretty lane. I don't love it myself personally, but it, I guess it is what it is. Um, let's see. I feel like these guys did go back to the drawing board and changed the zoning requests that they had originally asked from you guys. So I appreciate that. And I just kind of wonder, too, I'm, I'm asking you guys to really think about this because I feel like what kind of message would it send to future developers in our community? I mean, we're talking about getting people in and coming in. I, I feel like, you know, we need that and we have to accept the growth. And I like small-town Vernal. I didn't create the market, I didn't do anything with it, but it, it is what it is. So that's all I have.
I, I have a question for you, if I might. Something you mentioned that I had not heard before are these walking paths and a gym. Does that mean there are common areas that will be designated within this?
I'm guessing, I, I, I'm not on, involved with that party. I'm on the other side of the transaction, but that would be my understanding. They did mention that a little bit at the planning and zoning, talking about the, that I think it was a gym and a daycare and the walking path. So I'm not sure. I would like to think that the neighbors across the street could use it, too, I don't know. I know they walk the hills already right now with their animals, but unfortunately, I can't. I better not answer that for sure, but that was mentioned, that they, that is part of their plan.
Okay, well, what I heard from Rick, what you just said, the higher-density housing has a, has a, maybe a stigma attached. And that is that people who don't own their own home or share tend to be less attentive to the property and the condition of the property. And that may be of concern. I think Rick also mentioned people not being able to fit on their property and then parking in the street. And so those are sounding a lot like homeowner association issues. But I don't think we approve homeowners associations, I don't know that there's been discussion. But once you get common area, there's got to be something, because if it's just left unto whoever volunteers to take care of it, it doesn't really work very well. So when you said that, that kind of got me wondering what their plan for management of the area is. And Matt, I don't know, and since you don't represent them, you can't answer that. Okay, but maybe that is a question for Matt or for Gabby, thank you.
Sorry, this might be a mute point at this point, but I got an email from the applicant who unfortunately could not be here today. And he said he's listening online and wanted to provide some clarification to Mr. Bell's comments. He said, "I provide government relation consulting services for the oil sand. The property is being purchased by myself, which is Styler, and my partner Riley Park. We are in active business discussions with the oil sands project about their housing needs." So there's that, and then he just sent another email. He said, "Yes, there will be a fully planned master community, including a clubhouse, daycare, gym, other amenities for the residents of the community. Although, from a planning standpoint, I would advise to move away from rezoning for specific projects, because they are not obligated to build this in any way, shape, or form." But just some emails from the applicant as he's watching.
And then to your question, Commissioner Stringer, if they do have infrastructure that's commonly held by the owners of that development, they would have to have some kind of homeowner association they'd have to set up? And the county does have guidelines for what that has to look like and how it needs to be formatted and things?
But they're not committed to it by, through this action that we would take today?
Correct, so they could follow any of the subdivision guidelines that we have. And there are several different types of subdivisions that they could do and meet our subdivision ordinances.
Any comments from John? Any other questions or concern from the commission? There was a three to, three to one vote?
Three to one vote, yeah.
Well, I guess to do my job, I'll put it up for a motion.
Well, I would, I can go ahead and make the motion, I do, would like to have some further discussion. I'll make the motion to approve the change from RA one to R1 as presented.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it with the intent that we're going to have some more discussion on it, is that one?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion that we'd like to talk about before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I know who, we spoke, and I know who voted against this. And I also know that that person has been around and on planning for some time and has seen the effect of a promised zone, or zones. Said, oh yeah, we're going to do this, we just need to deal with this short-term. And then, as it turns out, she was correct, that it, once it got zoned, some of the promises were forgotten. So that is a concern to me. Not real wild about the loss of the, I mean, I don't know what's changed. I don't know what happened to the buffer of RA one around the R1, not that it was that critical. It doesn't address some of the infrastructure issues that were brought up. And then, even though we don't, couldn't zone around prospective development, it is concerning to me that this is a project with many moving parts, it's got to be dealt with. And just our approval doesn't guarantee any of those things happen, so that is concerning to me.
Comments?
You know, I like the fact of where they're building it, it's not in the middle of a hayfield. Or farm property, even, I like the fact of that, but I do have my concerns about changing it, but I guess that's it.
Okay, any further comment? Put it up for a vote. All in favor?
Nay. Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. So just, sorry, just a point of clarification, then, maybe John can answer. So what's the status of the application? And does that automatically, since the motion was to approve it and then it passed, does that automatically mean it's denied, or do we need another motion?
Formally, you can have another motion, but it's either going to fail by lack of motion, or you'll have another motion to deny. So we could probably skip the formalities and just, by affirmation of the board, if they're in agreeance, then it's, they're denying the application. So if any of the commissioners want to speak up and put it up for vote, they can ask the chair. But otherwise, I think those are our only two options at this point.
Okay, I just didn't want to get into a point where it's like, not finalized, the decision's not finalized and by state law we have to finalize it.
I would view it as, it would just be a formality to finalize that they're denying the application. If any of the commissioners want to put that actually to a vote, they're welcome to do it, but that's how I would interpret it.
I'll open it up for a motion, if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the application for rezon.
Okay. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. We have the need for a closed session today for the purpose of discussing pending and imminent litigation.
I would like to make that motion that we go into closed session at this time for the discussion on pending or imminent litigations. And upon that time, come back out and be adjourned, I think so, that needs to be read.
Okay. We are, it's on the agenda after the closed session.
You know what? I think I'll do, I'll just, we'll move it, let's move it so you don't have to wait around.
So let's, we'll hold that motion for a minute. Let's put the public comment ahead and come up and state your name. We'll take ten minutes, three minutes apiece, please.
My name's Steve Huber, concerned citizen and candidate for county commissioner. Democrat candidate for county commissioner. Now, can I put this up on the screen with the voice, with the sound?
With the sound? I don't know if it does or not, I don't know anything about that.
Do they have sound capabilities?
I don't know. We'll know in a minute.
What the purpose of the presentation is, to make sure that it's.
Well, I just want to talk about the commission meeting, and I'll bring up the commission meeting, last week's commission meeting, which the minutes had already been, just got approved. So, and I just want to comment on a few things in there. Huh? You'll have, I'm not very high-tech, you'll have to come.
Steve, if you can't get it to work.
Go right here to the county commissioner meeting.
Well, you have to be, oh, if you got that, just, okay, go right ahead then.
Let me click right here and then it should go to it.
Okay.
Now I got sound and everything?
We don't know.
Okay.
Turn it up.
How do I turn it up?
On your computer.
Oh, you're at a hundred percent?
Yeah. I must not be online.
Yeah.
Take me to the county, you're in the county.
If this is something that you would like to do, we could put you on the agenda next week and you could get up and do a presentation if you'd like.
Well, I just, I just got a few here that.
There you go. Now you're online.
Now I'm online.
Now you should be able to hear.
Got one minute left.
Okay, there's some comments made here at the first of the meeting.
It's live, yeah, it says it's live.
It's not, it's not giving me no sound.
You're on, this is today's meeting.
Pardon?
This is today's meeting.
Yeah, I want to, I want to go on the fifteenth last week's meeting.
Do you have a presentation, or is it? This one?
That's today's.
So you want this one?
Let's go fifteenth, yeah. Okay, now this is. I'm going to skip along here. What happened here, let's just go ahead and stop it for a second.
Yeah, why don't you just tell us what you're.
What happened here was Mike said he did not create, or whatever that, the way that phrase went.
Create, modify, or delete.
So then John got upset and wanted to know why. First, Bill asked what he meant by that. Well, what's happened here is the confusion in the software. You guys created another unelected bureaucrat department here last, several months ago, when you created the budget department. So then that, then that there, that messes up, in my opinion, messes up the software where nothing, they don't jive. And that's what Mike or John got upset over. So they're, what it's done is handicapped the auditing department, because you took some of the audit department away, and then, then the software's not going to work, the way that, the way they come in there. And it's by design, in, 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 in my opinion. Bill here comes from DC and bragged about it here in a few meetings ago. But anyway, he knows this software pretty good. He's pretty savvy on the software, he knows codes and stuff, because he worked for the BLM. The BLM is an unelected bureaucratic department that creates and makes. How come this ain't shut off?
All right.
But anyway.
Rick, I really want to hear what you have to say, and I'll put you on the agenda, I'll do whatever, but you're not prepared today. You've taken your time, no, you've taken your time, and you truly don't understand what you're talking about.
Well, that's your opinion now.
If you want to come in, if you want to come in and talk, we'll gladly talk, I'm not going to argue with you about it today.
Are you denying me my First Amendment right?
No, I give you your three minutes, you've actually taken six.
The First Amendment right, don't give three minutes, it ain't restricted to three minutes.
In this meeting, it is. He's used it.
Let me, let me tell you another, you are an elected official, sworn oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. That means you protect my constitutional right, a First Amendment right. Now, this is a public meeting. You're putting the restrictions on the time, that's not your place. I have the constitutional right and, and, and what.
If you can show me in the Constitution that you have a right to a different timeframe than I'm putting in a meeting on an agenda?
It's absolute.
Well, bring it to me, bring it to me.
In a public meeting, in a public meeting, to give my constitutional right of freedom of speech. Are you denying me that?
John?
John, John, have you, did you swear an oath, John?
First of all, this is just a comment period, not a question and answer period. The chair is able to put time, place, manner restrictions on public comments, and public comments aren't even a statutory requirement in public meetings. The state legislature killed that law that was proposed in this last legislative session. So the chair said public comment would be for ten minutes, each person, three minutes each. The one part, though, Mr. Chair, if a member of the public does want to stand up and then give their three minutes to another person, that is allowed. But the person would need to come up to make a comment and then give their, their time to another person.
Sure.
So that part would be allowed, I think there, I was actually looking down, so I didn't see who made that comment.
Tammy.
So Tammy, if she wanted to do that, that actually would be proper.
And that's fine.
Okay.
Concerned citizen, first of all, it's scary to get up in front of the public.
Concerned citizen. First of all, it's scary to get up in front of the public. I amend Mr. Huber for daring to speak, so I would like to give him my three minutes and I think he should be allowed to speak. It's scary to do IT. This is not his system and.
If you'd like to though, what I'm offering you is I will, I will put you on the agenda. You can put any kind of program you'd like to come present. I'm happy to do that.
That will work.
It just is.
But I want to make one more comment about John's comment about what the state legislature put out. Any, any law or code that goes against the Constitution is null and void. So what the state, what, what the state constitutions go, or the state laws or codes or anything else that goes against the Constitution are null and void. I am, that constitutional right. We derive our liberties and our rights from God, not the government. That's the Constitution. Now, I will take that next week's deal, agenda. Put me on the agenda of what I want to present and I want to go over that last week's meeting. If I can get this to where I can turn the, that up and, and shut it down, stop it when I want to, but there's several comments that Bill made that I want to talk about. And I will take, I will take that for next week.
Sounds good.
Agreed?
Yeah. I told you, I'll put you on the agenda. I will.
Okay.
10 minutes is up, but Pam, come on up.
Give me my three minutes. I do want to talk about Pam Clinch. I want to talk about last week also. It was very, it was very awkward and I have some great concern about what happened last week when John was literally chastising an elected official and a department head. I really took issue with that. And when this accounting services was taken from the clerk auditor, made a separate department, I was vocal about it then. I called the state auditor, had some concerns. Don't have the exact words, but the feeling that I, when I talked to them was that yeah, it's not a good idea for your county, but they're gonna do it anyway. That was kind of the bottom line. And I said that and I just want to follow up on that. You brought up SB 162. And the county auditor, that bill was changed to make, they deleted that all counties were, they didn't go by classic counties anymore. They just made them all one county. And they said the county auditor in these counties would be the new name of financial officer. That was the added change. Except if you lived in a county that had a council manager situation, then there was lists of other things that you would do for that. But in our county, we have a county auditor. He is the financial officer and it says right in the code that he shall provide accounting services for the county. And it defines accounting services in SB 162. And this is where the phrase is in that line that accounting services create, modify, and delete transactions and records. That was added to SB 162. That's why he says that every time, because it's not created, modified, or deleted in his office, which is what SB 162 says. So his job is to tell the commission, the legislative body, to give them judicial advice. So to me, you're not doing what the, the ordinance says to do, the new law says to do. You've created another department. So we had this situation last week. There was frustration. It's not working. You, Mike gave a whole presentation one day about how the finances work and it goes to the treasurer and the checks are made and then you came back a few weeks later and you had your system, how it was gonna work. Apparently, the two did not jive. And I'm just, I don't want this to lie. I just thought I shouldn't say anything, but this was intense and it wasn't appropriate last week, what happened, and you didn't say anything. So I assumed you agreed with what was happening. But it's not right what's happening and there's problems. There's always, every week, this was paid for without a purchase order. What's up with that? And the auditor has said he, he would welcome a purchasing agent. He's already said that a couple of times. But the accounting services should be created, modified, and deleted in his office according to state law. And so if it's not working and you're doing something that's against the law, you can fix that. And I think you can see it's not working apparently because he told them they better get their act together and get it working. And I just didn't appreciate the way that came down last week at all. So I really wanted to comment about that and that's all. Three minutes, ding.
Would you like to take comments? I mean, would you like to respond to any?
Well, I couldn't really understand. I couldn't follow it. It was kind of just.
What part did you not understand?
It was kind of babbling.
Bill Stringer!
I'm sorry, but I think part of the problem is that you didn't really relate the facts and so I couldn't understand. When you make a statement and then you take off as if that were a given, then I, I go, what? Because what we're, what we're really talking about here is if the name is bothering you, we've already talked about changing that, the accounting services is not what that group is doing. The problem we had last week when Rick was sitting here is we've got all the processes right, except the IT hasn't come around. We've got one end of it. And that's entering, say, the, the encumbrance. And then it is supposed to go to the auditor's office for review. Because the auditors don't approve anything. They just go, yes, this is in conformance. No, it isn't. Here's the problem.
Okay, just if you'd stop there for a second.
You had your three. What's, what's going on here is we've got Rick trying to work on it. He came and saw me after the meeting yesterday, or last Monday, and said he needs to work with Mike to get it finalized. And far as I know, he came and saw you. It's ready. It's going to be exactly what it's supposed to be in here pretty soon. Mike will be able to stop saying I didn't create, I didn't do this and do that. But it hasn't been by design of the law. It's been by the fact that the IT department hasn't quite caught up, but they are all but there.
It is the law.
We're following the law. We're, we're good.
On line 129 says that it will be created, modified, and deleted with the financial officer who is the county auditor.
We wrote it, so we know how it works.
And that's why Bart was so involved with it. He didn't say anything last week. Babbling? That was so mean!
Well, I, I, it's what it is.
Oh my gosh!
I'm sorry.
I don't believe that. I just wanted to call this out so this didn't happen again. The four of you have made decisions and.
Pam.
I could babble on more.
My office gives legal advice to all offices and departments of the county. That's what we do. I have brought a clear distinction between an encumbrance report and the financial system. And my comments last week were actually directed at all four elected officials to say, please get this fixed. That's what my office does.
That's what it was.
So do not say you four. I will take personal note of that. Please don't. My office, and I hear giggling in the gallery, you all can be quiet. We provide legal advice to all offices and departments of the county. My legal advice has been the same for all offices and departments of the county. If people want to bring a new statute to my review, I will review it with no emotion and come up with the best legal advice in reference to the other attorneys in our office and continue to provide the best legal advice we can to all offices and departments in the county. So just so there's clarity of what my role was last week. It was calling the county out on this process.
Well, I appreciate that clarification because it was not apparent. It was directed at the auditor for his verbiage, which is out of this SB 162. Then you bring up the department head. That's not how it appeared to me and it bothered me that I felt you were attacking those two.
We're interpreting all state statutes, all of them, not, not grabbing one paragraph or one clause out of each statute. We're doing our best to interpret all. Well, you did say you four.
I'm down. Thank you.
Okay.
You okay, Bill?
Call this meeting to close the public comment and now I will accept your motion. So do I have a second?
Well, I just want to say that with respect to the partial presentation by Mr. Huber, with respect to Pam, with, with respect to everyone here, there is no doubt, we've, we've, by creating this public comment section and you're defining it as to what it is. We're, we're not checking, we're not vetting people ahead of time. We're letting people with good ideas, dumb ideas, smart things, dumb things come up and make comments. So that, that is exactly what it is for. So I, I actually enjoy the public comment section, but it is just comment. I mean, we're, we take it. We don't even need to respond to it. There are ways, if you've got an issue with us, the best thing to do is to come and see us if you've got a working issue. This is a forum for either making a comment about, you know, clarification perhaps or just to say, well, you know, I, I think that's a good idea. I think it's a bad idea. I like the balloon fest. I like this. I like that. But in terms of just coming up for self-aggrandization, I think that's just a waste of time. But anyway. So that's, I'm ready.